Ready to start.
Anyway, I get time.
Please join me in a pledge of pledges.
I'm pledged to the US Constitution of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence what we think about those troops and those that are not here who are defending us. Thank you very much. I've asked that Paul and Andrew come here during public comment to give us a report and a summary of what happened at the Yarmouth Town Meeting.
They lost.
Well, I saw that. So, what did the lessons learn from all of this?
Well, I mean, the thing I took from it, a lot of it was, there was, well, one, most people there came in with their minds made up. There wasn't a lot of persuasion on either side. The noes vastly outweighed the yeses. And there was a lot of fear out there among the individuals about how they were going to be able to afford, pay for this. And I think there's a strong set of lessons about towns' ability to move these things forward, given their ability to distribute the cost under the current rules of the game. I don't see how, I don't see how any of these municipally-based projects moves under the current financing options that are available to them in terms of who pays, what share comes from the local tax base, and how that gets allocated.
Yeah, it's, it's very difficult, given the size and complexity of these projects, to move it through a town meeting process. And I think every town has struggled with that, and every town looking to do so in the future will struggle.
Well, there's an issue for me, and I think you've heard me articulate it the last time when we were giving your presentation. I think it's time for us to provide more visibility to who is really responsible for making a correction, because it seems that the towns, or let's say the town governments, are not in a position to, let's say, to move this forward. They have not made it clear to their constituents as to their exposure with regard to participation in the solution of the problem. So, the question becomes, and this is why I asked you to come in, is to, how do we, how do we provide a aggressive program of making people aware that it is they who are responsible for correcting the problems that they are contributing to? And the towns themselves may be a vehicle by which that solution may be found, but at the end of the day, it is the individuals within the community that are responsible for correcting the problems that they're causing. I have great concern that since we stand on our water, that Yarmouth is sharing an aquifer, a lens, with several other communities that are contiguous to it, at least of which is Barnstable. And I wonder as to what effect this has on their contiguous communities, that Yarmouth is not taking a position, let's say, at town meeting to do something about it. What do you suggest with regard to the effort of the comprehensive plan, the effort with regard to this peer review that we're going forward with as far as identifying the problem? I think this is the opportunity that we have to make it clear that the problems that are being caused are not ones by the whole community, but by the members of the community.
Well, there's over 10 years of science with the MEP program then. And along with that, certainly leadership from the county level and the Law Protection Collaborative, there's been, you know, an intensive effort over the last six years at collaboration. And I think it's been very successful with the Lakes Education and Outreach. It's been successful, at least, to finance with the 0% SRF loans too. Where it fails is on intermunicipal cooperation on capital projects and shared mortgages. And, but it has been completely an incentive-based approach to this. And what I heard on the town meeting floor is that the good news is, I think, that 10 years of effort, and the six years of effort, has got people to the point where they know there's a problem. I mean, you don't have to live here for more than one generation and know that we've got a significantly degraded situation out there in our pesturias and environs, and that we have to fix it. So, that's the good, the bad news is, people feel very strongly that it is, that it is unaffordable. And in these economic times, they can't afford any increase in property taxes, fees, associated with such an extensive cleanup. And if we can get beyond that, and get to the, to the point where people are willing to pay a certain amount, the question is, who's going to kick in the rest? There's going to be a gap there. So, that, I think the answer is a mixture of, and I think what you'll see. I mean, the litigation's out there, the mediation starts on the 24/1st, the report back from the mediation on December 6th, the report to the judge on January 6th, the judge has indicated no more extensions. So, you're going to see more, I believe, more discussion about enforcement from the feds, from the state, and probably from the region. In addition to that, we have to start, we've done a great job at describing the problem. We now start, have, we have to have a more comprehensive and cohesive discussion of what the solution is. And we have to do it from the priority of what is affordable and effective.
Well, the other thing I heard at the, at the meeting, there were a number of people who got up and spoke strongly against the towns' program, but vaguely and in ways they didn't maybe fully able to articulate signaled that they had an interest in and saw a role for a regional approach to this. I heard that a number of times, and I hadn't heard that in other vote no situations. So, there was, there were some people who just, you know, didn't understand the nature of the problem. And so, obviously, we have additional work to do on the outreach side. But there were more people, I thought, who didn't like this option, but knew that doing nothing wasn't really an option. Now, they didn't have an alternative in front of them, so they, you know, they had the yes, no, and they chose the no. But I sensed more receptivity than I've heard in these types of forums to a different way of doing things. And I think that, you know, as we've talked about before, the lawsuit is very much directed at the individual homeowner. The individual homeowner has responsibility for causing the problem. They have potential significant liability for being held responsible for solving it through the courts. And yeah, I think where we're best served in our efforts is to begin to focus on not how do we get people in their current situations to be willing to pay for something? We need to change, we need to think about ways to change what the current situation is, because, just going back and educate, you can educate people all you want. What the loud message was, was, "We can't pay for it this way. We can't, we won't." And I don't see that changing anytime soon.
I expect the response will be the same in all 15 communities. And if you look at the level of effort that has to go into one community, that's the same level of effort around education about a particular solution that's going to have to go in in every community. And the prospect of taking, watching Chatham and Orleans and Yarmouth at this point, and watching that play out over 15 communities, is not one that makes me feel comfortable, but our ability to arrive at the lowest-cost option for an effective solution.
Well, I think, I think part of the problem, and you've said this, is that we're bound by the financial models that we're allowed to use under the general laws. And, and there are some who think that it should all be done in the tax rate, some think it should be all done in the betterment, some think it should be a combination. But I noticed when Bill Hinchey was speaking, and he gave an example of a, of a community with a $4 billion value, and if you were going to do a project that costs $300 million, it'd be $50 a month, and it's about $600 a year, which doesn't seem like a whole lot. But I just remember the other night, we dealt with a community that has to, that are private roads, and they want them taken. They're going to have to pay, I think it's $800 a year over 20 years, just to have their roads brought, brought up to standard. And they want them, because if that has an effect on the property values. So, I think that we should get-
Well, but also it has an effect on their day-to-day life.
That's right. But we need, but they also, they also are looking ahead to the issue of the wastewater, you know, the searing, whatever it might be. So, it seems to me that we should try to come up with some kind of creative funding model that's totally different than what we have. And if it's going to take some kind of new state law, or federal law, or something to make it happen, and I don't know what that is, but I don't think we could be bad on the property taxes.
We began doing some work and thinking around financing, alternative financing structures, so that, you know, you don't look at it from the perspective of what, I mean, I think we've looked at and talked to towns and provided technical assistance to towns, and what can you do given the current rules of the game? And what you have now is, you know, a plan that tried to apply those rules of the game in Barnstable that failed for a variety of reasons, because it was unaffordable to the individuals who participate in the system. You now have a companion failure in Yarmouth, which was using the same set of tools, applying them differently, spreading the costs out as best they could, and that was still not successful. So, you know, we began doing some thinking about, you know, how might you change the game in a way that would give you a better outcome? Because I think we, I mean, my own sense is, we have a pretty good sense now of how the next half a dozen of these are going to play out in town meetings, and it doesn't change anything. No one's going to get, no town-by-town program is going to go through town meeting right now unless there is some huge change in the underlying economics in this country. And I don't see that happening in a way that meets our needs.
And I think Andy was right. What we've seen now is two major failures at opposite extremes of the existing financing mechanisms that are possible. So, it does sort of call out for something new. You know, you got a complete betterment approach in one community, you had a significant shift to the general tax base in another community. I mean, that's, there aren't many available options that aren't, aren't in the middle there somewhere. So, I think we knew, we, we need new approaches, but it's, it's, you know, we continue to try to make headway in an incentive-based way, by exercising leadership. At some point, enforcement is going to be necessary in order to get people's attention around a more coordinated approach to solving this problem.
Well, yet, you know, the other thing too is that some of the towns only have a certain amount of borrowing capacity that they can use. So, they may not even be able to, to use, fail to fund their wastewater projects because they don't have the borrowing capacity to do it. So, that's another issue. And that's where I think the county might play some role in terms of bonding, or, I don't know. But I just think we, we need to come up with a financial model that really works. The other piece to it is that, the people like in some of the towns know that are going to be sewer, they know where their sewers are, they know that they're probably going to be a part of that sewer plant. But the others, there are other, loads of people out there that don't know if they're the ones that might be able to comply with the title of five because of where they live, because of the groundwater flow. And so, we don't really know yet who those, where those-
I think there's a good answer coming on that.
Oh, there is? Okay.
That's going to be the focus of $150,000, that we're going to, you know, roll up in this half a million dollar study to do a GIS-based, a map-based approach to providing those answers on a watershed-by-watershed, sub watershed-by-subwatershed basis. And so, that's what we're going to be engaging in. So, I think we will have, within a period of time, a much more informed, a lot more information regionally to answer those questions, and that's absolutely necessary, because if you can't answer those questions, you can't get to total cost, you can't get to total cost, you can't get to issues of affordability. And it's clear to me that the discussion doesn't need to be continuing to underline what the problem is now. We have to look at a solution, and we have to approach it from a, from a point of view of affordability. Because if we can't convince people that it is affordable, we're not going to get this passed anywhere.
Okay. I'm going to suggest to you, it will never be affordable in the minds of some people. But I think that the urgency that I don't see in a community is one that has to be based upon the idea that action is required now, not to continue to talk about it, not to continue to dither about it, but to, but to look at the responsibility we have to address this issue in the, in the present, and not put it off because we're still considering options. I would like to suggest to you that the Wastewater Collaborative and the Cape Pride Commission, within the next 90 days, come up with some, what I would call, some tangible solution that addresses this, especially from both the financial point of view and also for the impact that, you know, that could be caused if we don't act on a, let's say, on a, on a sooner rather than later basis.
Yeah, I just, you know, wanted to say that I happen to have, I was in the area and I had time, and at least I went to the town meeting. And I agree with Andy's assessment. I think that there were more people that recognized the problem. And this happened in the Stewart's Creek, back and forth between the public. It wasn't as though people were saying, "We don't see a problem, and we don't need to do anything about this." They all recognized a problem. They all wanted to be, they are all willing to pay, to do their small portion, or what they consider a fair portion. But, you know, it's more, it was irresponsible of the town leaders here, you just felt like they just didn't accept this solution. And the fact that, you know, it was the town of Yarmouth, and they asked, both Andy and Paul, and Paul spoke to it, at the meeting goes to show you how a lot has changed in three years, as far as people's awareness and attitudes. And I think that, you know, as far as looking at financial models, that has been something that you're, you've been working on. I'm not sure if, you know, 90 days is, is where you think you've been-
No, I think we need to, we need to show some tangible evidence that we're moving ahead on it, rather than waiting for three more years to go by. We've been working at this for six years. I have the frustration that goes from starting to recognize this problem 10 years ago, to go out and talk to people, to have them get the same answers that you got at this thing, which is, "Yeah, we got a problem, we're supposed to do something about it," but nobody will reach into their pocket, pay for it. It comes a time when people have to not only recognize that there's a problem, but they have to be willing to take responsibility and do something about it. And what I'm saying is that whatever, just speaking for me personally, not for the other commissioners, whatever needs to be done, I would like to know what, what role you would think that would be useful for somebody like me to do. And I will go around and promote it, because we do need to do something about this. We can't let it go any, any longer.
We've tried to, our approach to date has been to support the towns in their effort at local planning, solve the problem. We have non-incentive-based tools that we haven't used. And I think Andy and I can get together and come back and have a discussion about what those might be.
Okay. When do you propose to do that?
I think if you give us 30 days, I'd feel more comfortable. October.
Fair enough. Maggie, would you make a note of that, to put that on the agenda for 30 days from today? Did you have anything else?
No. No? No? I'm glad you came on in. Yes.
Thank you for coming. And you can appreciate why I wanted you to come in.
It was a great disappointment to, to know of the outcome.
Okay. Well, is there anybody else for public comment? During the next 90 minutes, the agenda is the REPC update and what happened during Irene.
Regional Emergency Plan Committee. So, everybody at home knows who REPC is. We know.
I'm trying to congratulate you. You got the food homes from Cape Cod Times and many other agencies with regards to all those things that we did, you know, to help our people.
Earl helped. Having, having Earl last year, we, we learned some lessons, and we realized that there were some things we needed to address very early on. It was an interesting storm. What we saw with Irene was, you know, kind of unique in a lot of ways, because National Weather Service usually, we'll start to hear from National Weather Service about 72 hours, maybe 96 hours out. They were really on this storm quite early. And so, we, we really got into a lot of the discussions with this storm very, very early on in the process. It was, it followed some paths that were, were close to some previous storms. We saw, I think, the 1944 storm was, was discussed a lot, and there was a lot of fear that we may have even seen this come into, come into the Buzzards Bay area. And when you, when you mix a storm like a good-sized storm with Buzzards Bay, you have the potential of seeing some very significant storm surge. So, we, we were very lucky. The National Weather Service really, and a lot of our local weather folks down here just really kept us in tune very early on. And we, and that, that being said, we have some really good folks that do weather here on the Cape as well. So, we've been, we've been very lucky that way. And, and you know, what it, what it allowed us to do is to, to really get a good run, a good trial of our regional sheltering claim that we've been, we've been working on. What was, what was interesting was, this was the first time that we had opened all six shelters. We opened from Nauset down to Mashpee High School. And in between, we had Cape Cod Tech, we had Barnstable, Dennis, Yarmouth, and we also had the Sandwich High School. And this was the first time we actually opened all of them for a storm. And it was a good thing, because we, we saw about 200 clients come into these shelters. And three of them in particular were able to handle pets. So, we, we saw pets come into the shelter too. There were a few little bumps in the road getting things going and getting things started, but I think, I think for the most part that we were, we were pretty lucky. Things really, things really came together pretty well. The Executive Committee of the REPC met often, conference calls, just, just to make sure that it was getting, getting these things opened at the right time. And, you know, I, I've got to say, I was really happy the way it turned out. We, we also saw a lot of the volunteer groups just really come out and, and work out very well. Red Cross was phenomenal. And we, we saw some, you know, we've had some management changes and associations change, where our chapter is business-wise associated with, with the folks out of Mass Bay, the Mass Bay chapter. And you know what? Quite honestly, it didn't even seem like there was a change. So, you know, now, here we are, you know, we've, we've tried it out, we've seen some things that we need to work on, we've probably got to do a little bit better job on our feeding policy. We will have, this was a pre-declared disaster, so we will have some expenses that go into FEMA that will, will reimburse us. But this is why you were able to help us get a, get a budget, you know, approve a budget for us on this, on this program. And so, we'll be able to pay for some, pay for some food and, and get things moving. I think one of the earliest, one of the things we realized during Hurricane Earl, which then became Tropical Storm Earl, is very early on, we were dealing with a lot of national press. And that allowed us to be a little bit more ready for Irene. So, what we basically did was, we, we had our PIO from the Incident Management Team working with us very early on in the event.
What people were PIOs?
A Public Information Officer. And our, our Public Information Officer really did a great job making sure that, that information was sent out to the press, the fire chiefs, the police chiefs, the towns, all the emergency managers. But, but also, what, what they were able to do was kind of allow us to, to work. And the Public Information Officer, you know, works with the press, works with them, sets up the interviews. We learned in Earl that really, when you have a national event, and we were the only ones under, under the, under the scope when it came to Earl, we had more national press down here than you could ever imagine. And, and trying to accommodate the press can take away from your actual storm prep. So, having that role, that Information Officer role was critical for us. And so, he was able to, you know, Kevin Morley, who served in that role, was able to make sure that the, that problem, not that it's a problem, but, but that issue was taken care of, and it allowed us to, to focus on prepping for the storm. And it was, it was really good. It was really good. We, we saw a lot of volunteer groups participate with us, American Red Cross.
American Red Cross is amazing.
It really, it really was, it was seamless. The volunteers with, with Red Cross were just, just phenomenal and professional in all ways. We also saw, you know, when we set up our shelters, we have multi-purpose shelters. We have a Red Cross component, we also have a medical reserve court component. So, we had folks with medical backgrounds in, in each of those shelters, each of those six shelters. We also had SERP teams assisting us. And they help us out with, with getting those shelters set up and actually serving in the Red Cross roles in, in many ways. And then we also had a disaster animal response team. And so, three of those shelters, two used the dark team, the disaster animal response team. And Cape Cod Tech uses their own animal control officer and their volunteers. And those, those locations were able to take pets. And in a vacation situation, you know people travel with that other part of their family, their dogs. And, and so, it was good to have that option, to be able to put, to put people out there. It was very good. I was, I was very pleased with the way it all worked out, and I was also very pleased the way everything really synced together very well. Another group that was out there and really deserves a lot of praise is our amateur radio folks. Yeah, the ham radios were, were, you know, we, every, every time there's an event, we set up a thing called a multi-agency coordination center. We set it up out of the base, the sheriff is very gracious, he gives us a conference room out there, and we set up this thing we call a MAC. We had a gentleman in the MAC who was our ham radio operator, who worked 36 hours straight.
Wow.
It was, it was absolutely, that was the dedication that we saw. And that, and that was what we saw at the MAC. You figure you had volunteers in town emergency operation centers, and we had a person from amateur radio in every single shelter. That was the redundant communication. So, if we lost phone lines, if we lost police radio, fire radio, we, we, no matter what, had that ham radio operator there. And, you know, they're kind of, they're these, these unsung heroes. They're really, they did a wonderful job, and we were, we're very excited with the, with, with the result. When we opened up the MAC, we actually, we went through, we, we opened the MAC on Saturday morning at 8:00 AM. We were expecting landfall with the storm sometime Sunday morning. So, that, we went through about six operational, six 12-hour operational periods with the coordination center. We actually closed the MAC down at 5:00 on, on Monday. Yep, on Monday. And basically, what the MAC was there for was to coordinate resources coming to the Cape, to handle some of the power calls that were coming in from public safety agencies and get those to N-Star. And then also, they're in charge of keeping an eye and making sure the shelters are handled. And that was, and that was, that was very huge. For resources, you know, if a town like Wellfleet or Eastham loses water for an extended period of time, it's, it's a little bit more of a, of a problem than, say, for Barnstable or Falmouth. Maybe not West Barnstable, but homes on private wells, if you don't have power, you don't have plumbing. You don't have plumbing.
We fill that bathtub.
You fill the bathtub. And so, we actually worked and we, we had water sent out to the town of Eastham to, to assist with it. And this MAC-
Do we have a water trailer?
Uh, no, actually, we did a request through FEMA, excuse me, through MEMA, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, and they allocated, I would guess FEMA assets, and down to that location to, to solve that problem. Where, you know, what's kind of interesting is, we've just been really, you know, we, when we set up the MAC, the MAC, the folks that operate it are current and retired professionals who have been in public safety. So, you know, MAC managers are folks you're familiar with. Captain Mike Walker from Chatham Police Department, Chief Roy Jones from Brewster Fire. So, we're able to get these professional folks into this, into this MAC, and to actually work on, on getting these resources out to the towns. You know, other, other folks, Crystal Lepine from the Sheriff's Department, and we have folks from the state. It just, it really works out, it really works out well. It's a great function, and it allows us to kind of, you know, make sure that the things, if we see a major area having problems, like, say, the outer Cape, the MAC, what it does is, it allows us to focus our concentration there. If we see it as an upper Cape event, we can try to focus resources there. In this case, I mean, it was a very interesting storm, because we saw our initial problems on the upper Cape. We, the towns of, you know, a town like Falmouth had, I think, a number of priority power line down calls, type calls, coming in. But we didn't see those necessarily on the outer Cape until that second set of wind came in at 4:00 in the afternoon, the backside of the storm, so to speak. And so, then we, you know, you kind of have to switch, you're still handling the problems on the upper Cape, and then the outer Cape issue starts to occur. So, it really, it really seems like we have a, a good system down over the next few weeks. Over the next few weeks, we will be evaluating it. We will be doing after actions. We've asked all of our volunteer agencies to go out there and to do the after action. I know Gene Roma, who's in our office with the Medical Reserve Corps, has already started to talk to our volunteers and have them get their comments in. So we can see how we can improve and make things work out a little bit better.
Are you going to post that all on our webpage?
We will post it all on the webpage. And you know, we've got a gentleman in the department, Brian Baumgartl. And Brian was a savior because what he was able to do was just take that information that we were putting out and also get it onto our website. And so Brian would be at home and it's, and I'm really happy we have iPhones because you can get these things sent out and he would be able to put it right onto the website. And you know, or we would be able to do it right from the MAC from an email address and get it right to the website and make sure that information was there.
How was our interoperability?
I thought our interoperability worked really well. We're very lucky here on the Cape because our police and fire departments work well together in general. I mean, we, in a sense, the shelters are interoperable. You know, we have our communications interoperability, but we also have our sheltering interoperability, where you know, you could be in a Harwood Shelter and see somebody from Brewster or Chatham taking their turn as the EMT in the shelter for that evening. And that's what we've been able to do. We've been able to get the towns to commit and realize that there is a savings overall because instead of Harwood having somebody there for six operational periods, they've got somebody there maybe for two operational periods while Chatham and Brewster and whoever else participates is able to do the same thing.
What's it been, go ahead, Ben.
Well, I just wanted to say, I was really impressed with the entire operation. I actually participated in two of the EOC conferences.
Great.
Thursday, Friday and Saturday, and the MIMA, the MIMA conference calls.
Excellent, good.
And I thought the way, I only, I was in Falmouth, so I know how well the town came together. And one thing I know towards the, it was mostly on Saturday, when we knew that we knew that we're going to be power lines down.
Yes.
And there's a number of elderly who live alone, who would be without power. So we did a neighborhood, kind of neighbor, not a neighborhood, a neighbor-to-neighbor. If you know someone on your street who's elderly and lives alone and is losing power, please assist that person because...
Excellent.
And I think that's something that we could do locally. I think if this comes together, it should be part of the plan, getting people to help their neighbors. And the other piece, of course, we know is NSTAR, that we've already, I think, sent a letter. But I was concerned too, when the power lines are down, it's their responsibility to stand by those lines until they're, until the issue's resolved. And they didn't do that too well this time. I know we had two trucks, two fire engine trucks that were held up for five and six hours, standing by until NSTAR arrived.
You know, the interesting thing is that they seem to have been regressing because years ago in Boston Edison, it was self-reporting. In other words, a consumer would say, "The line is down outside," and they would call in, and that's when the trouble crew would react. I think with technology and the fact that they have ways of identifying, let's say, by electronic transmission, where some of the outages are, that we'd like to see that. But most important, what was the interaction of the Public Information Officer from NSTAR and your Regional Emergency Planning Committee?
We actually had a person from NSTAR in our Multi-Agency Coordination Center, as we did with our Public Information Officers. So we were able to get a lot of that information out and put it into our Situation Reports. So anytime, so what we were able to do was we were able to have that person just touch base with the NSTAR rep or talk to another designated that that NSTAR rep may have asked. We could get the current numbers and we can put them in our Situation Reports. What we were also able to do was help NSTAR triage what may have been a Priority One, a Priority Two, or a Priority Three that was coming in from public safety offices. The big concern with the towns and a thing that will need to be addressed is, you know, it is not good for a town's assets like a police officer or a fire, piece of fire apparatus to be at a downed power line. It's, you know, because what that does is it potentially takes it away from that emergency. So those are things that we're going to, you know, I'm sure are going to be addressed. I think as we go through this after-action report, I think you're going to start to see that communication with utilities and emergency management continue and maybe become even more enhanced. Because you know, this storm also showed us another thing. And that was, you know, when we dealt with Earl, we were the target. It was Cape and the Islands.
Right.
When we dealt with this storm, it was a statewide emergency. And so you know, as a logistics person, you really need to look at what happens in these statewide events. And I think that's also going to need to be done at our Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, is to look to see what they...
For full disclosure, I'm on the board of the Red Cross, so as I say good things about them, I just want that to be known. But I do know that they do tremendous work and they really coordinate with you very, very well.
They're great.
There is that change of leadership going on right now.
But Glenn was there, Glenn Beasley was there.
I'm sure he was, I'm sure he was.
He was on the phone.
I have no doubt. And even though it is primarily volunteers, it does cost them, as it does, even though everything is, it sounds like everybody's volunteering here, there's lots of money being expended by the county, by the health department, and by agencies that are volunteer agencies because even though the volunteers are there, they have the supplies, they have the mobility to get that out there. So there's thousands and thousands of dollars. So if anybody wants to contribute for future safety, I'll put that out there. However, you did say, it was two questions I had. One was, some of your volunteers did do what sort of what the Red Cross did. So did that mean that they were sort of there doing those jobs in absence, and the Red Cross could go other places? Or was there, wasn't over, tripping over each other to try to do the same thing?
Wasn't it tripping over? You know, Red Cross has had some MOUs available with CERT teams to assist with the shelter setups.
All big old CERTs.
CERTs are Community Emergency Response Teams.
And MOUs are...
Memorandums of Understanding, yes. They're written handshakes, as we like to call them. Sorry, my life can be acronym-filled.
Yes.
What we have, what ended up happening in the storm was, we actually saw some additional shelters open. And we needed to make sure some resources were there. And that's where the Medical Reserve Corps and the CERT teams were really able to come into play as well. The town of Falmouth opened up their own shelter, and if I'm not mistaken, they use volunteers from their own personal CERT team. These folks are also trained to Red Cross protocols. And so they were able to get that shelter up and going. Medical Reserve Corps, I think, was also able to send a few folks down to assist that shelter. Province Town, we had a similar situation, and we're actually looking at the potential of adding an additional regional shelter there as well. Province Town and Truro, it's still about a 25-mile drive to Nauset High School, at least 20. And so you know, to look at this, look at these communities, these two communities, we almost need to combine resources there as well. They opened a community shelter. We did send some resources down there. There is a county trailer down there right now, and I think we also sent down there some animal supplies to handle an animal population. And at some point, we will get some additional cops down there as well. Unfortunately, in this storm, some, a grant that we received from our Regional Homeland Security Council, we were still expecting some of the supplies, but they did not come in yet. I think they're in this week.
Okay. I have one other question. As my power went out, I was shutting the door in my house and had to, I was in the process of getting my daughter to college. So I just unplugged all of my different appliances because I did have an air conditioner on it. It was a very muggy day earlier that day. And so I didn't want everything, you know, revving right back up when the power came on. I don't know how I had the wherewithal to do such a thing. But when I came home, I was reading the paper and there was a power line down in Eastham. And I think this is where some of the break, it was, I thought it was the day after when I came back because there was this big bang and the power went out for a little bit and then came back on.
Sounds like a transformer.
But in Eastham, it said that there was a downed power line. And simultaneously, right near that house, there was a surge that like went back into the house and created a fire. So the woman came running out of her house, you know, because there was no, now there's no power, you kind of called the police. So she comes screaming out while her husband finds the, you know, the douser and fire extinguisher. And the fire department was right there, happened to be right in front of her house because they had gotten a call on a downed power line. Now was that a surge that went back into that house? I mean, do you know what the details were about that? I mean, not that you're in NSTAR or you're an electrician.
Yeah. I would just guess there was probably a power surge of some sort, or if lines were re-energized or something like that. Bill may actually be aware of that.
I thought that was very, I think that was very scary because it somehow went back into the house. And if they hadn't been there, like I was walking out of my house. And the other thing was on that, I forget what the other point of it was, but it just seemed very, you know, how does, how can we make sure, I mean, what is the information we can send to people about those types of situations?
If a short circuit occurs, that usually adds to the effect of, let's say, of a fault current. And the fault current might have, you know, there might have been an interruption of ground and that may have contributed to the effect of the surge. But in each case, there's a separate answer. And what we found out, when I used to look at grounding issues years ago, was that it's an art to identify what happens with ground. We could show examples where transformers were burnt out, but the wires were intact. And other instances where after lightning strokes, the lines were burnt out, but the transformers were intact. So all of these issues regarding to the transmission of electricity, what happens during surges and things like that are very important. One of the things that needs to happen in the interim is, there needs to be more attention paid to the arbor responsibility because in many cases, overhanging branches, especially when they're very green, can cause short circuits. Those short circuits can lead to unscheduled outages in between storms and storm events. So this is all part of what I hope NSTAR is looking at in terms of maintenance. But in talking to the people here, if they see, if they see an overhanging branch on a service drop between their service pole and their house, they should make sure that they report it because they shouldn't cut it themselves, but they should make sure that NSTAR is aware of it. In the same way as if when they begin to dig. Dig safe is very important. But you can see what the overhangs are, you know, the green branches can cause, you know, an outage over both distribution and transmission lines. So pay attention to that and report it, you know, when you see that. And I believe that NSTAR has a reporting there.
The one thing I found missing from NSTAR this time around was, they usually always updated the community on what areas of town were still without power, or we've just finished this area and now we're moving over here. And now there were 10,000 people, now there's only 4,000 left. Those kinds of communications that were just not available this time.
I think that's something that they, they're going to need to, I think they were aware of. I think they may have had some internal issues, maybe with some computers or something, that may have had some issues.
They didn't have Jeff loose anymore.
That's what I was going to say, they haven't replaced Jeff.
Sure, well, but we do have a very good rep that we work with.
Yeah.
And that's Dennis Galvin.
Oh, yeah, Dennis is great.
And Dennis is very good, so...
Right. But I mean, you know, there was two of them at one time, so you know, and Jeff was sort of on the upper end of Cape Town.
You know, Jeff was always a big supporter of the Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and he was also a member of the Executive Board there, so.
Yes, he was.
We miss Jeff, we miss Jeff every day.
Right.
Well, you do need to have that level of interest from NSTAR to help us out.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we've been around a while for this, did you have any, you know, what would be the takeaway that you would want to leave with us on this?
I would say that, you know, the REPC has come a long way since we formed back in 2002. We've been really, we've been able to develop from originally a hazmat committee where we were addressing our hazardous materials in our towns according to federal law, to where we can work together and actually be a regional all-hazard planning committee. And I think that's where we've succeeded. We've been able to take these issues and to respond to them and actually give us, and give us a good response. I mean, you know, since 2002, we've been saying that, you know, we're going to be on our own for 48 to 72 hours. And in some ways, that was the case with this event. I mean, this was a statewide event. So we were on our own for 48 hours in this case. And you know what? We did okay.
Yeah.
I think that one of the things that has come out of it, when we see materials, that when you post the report on the webpage, that you make a list of the materials that people need to have so that they can prepare personally.
Well, it's a pleasure.
And another tool, by the way, that was really important for us to have in this event was 211. Everything that we put out, we, you know, for information, everything that our Public Information Officer, for situation reps, press releases, shelter openings, that tool has really become important because it really can get the, it can get the information out to a lot of folks and a lot of folks who may have some needs. So we found getting that out to 211 was huge. So the work that, the work that was done by the Human Services Department was, it really helps us out in terms of...
And that's going to be a great segue because that's the next issue on our agenda.
Exactly. So we were very lucky.
Thank you so much.
Sean, head job, thank you.
Have a great day.
I want to note, did somebody tell the President he had to leave Otis so that we could use it as a shelter? Or did he go on his own?
I think actually Secret Service may have requested the President to leave.
Yeah.
We had some, originally when we opened up the Operations Center, we had some phone issues that needed to be fixed by the Secret Service. I think they just left a little earlier than anticipated, yeah. There's the storm.
As soon as they closed the golf course, he was on.
The next issue on our agenda, discussion of Continuum of Care Grant Writer from Beth Albert.
What does that mean?
Actually, Beth is not here today and is asked that we bring an issue to her attention. I also have some backup from Estelle if you'd like to come in as first row.
Would you come forward?
But if I would add before, I'd like to just introduce this issue. Sheila, as your representative on Human Services, is very familiar with it. We have a request to use our existing FY12 budget funds to use $7,000 of county fund, which would be appropriated in the county commissioner's budget.
Have been appropriated.
That are in your existing budget, so not allocated to this, but this is your existing budget. So there's no supplemental budget request required. But there is, you do have, you know, you have your own operating budget, and there has been a request, an issue was brought to Beth, and I'll let Estelle go into the details of it. But my message to you on Beth's behalf, because she's not here today, is that these are, well, it doesn't require supplemental appropriation because those funds are in your existing FY12 budget.
Who's budget?
The county commissioners.
We have our own budget.
And our mission, and our contingent budget.
Right.
So the funds are available for you, should the commissioners and Beth is asking and does support the use of these funds, $7,000 of county commissioner's budget to fund a grant writer to prepare for HUD to develop the Continuum of Care Grant. I will let Estelle speak to what that is.
I want you to introduce yourself to the...
Sure, Stella Fritzinger, I'm Community Action Committee of Cape Cod and the Islands and co-chair of the Regional Network to Address Homelessness on Cape Cod and the Islands.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm actually doing backup here and really only here. As you're all aware, and to bring you up to speed, Mary Pat, you'll remember this in a second. Every year, the Continuum of Care throughout Cape Cod and the Islands puts in what is called a supernova grant to HUD, okay? And brings into the region as a result of that grant, $1,494,000 and change. The number has stayed level funded for the last three years, but we always do very well. In the past, the long ago past, the county had, when they were giving out small grants, always funded the position and CAC acts as the facilitator for the Continuum of Care. That also includes the fact that this region, along with other regions, is responsible for putting in the point-in-time homeless count, et cetera. CAC provides in kindness the facilitator of the Continuum of Care, about $18,000 a year. And we have historically paid for the grant writer. It's a very specialized grant. It's not something that I can sit my grant writer down and say, "Write it." You know, this is, the grant writer is always somebody who needs to have the expertise in this particular field. It's a regional grant that has several applicants... It's, it's, it's a regional grant that has several applicants all who go together. Um, we're not, C A C has felt the effects of the economy as much as anyone else has, and for the last few years, we've been unable to afford it. At the same time, HUD has recognized that people can no longer afford to write their grants by themselves. There's an onus to have a more streamlined effect. So HUD has created what's called the H U D A R T Act. And the anticipation will be that for the very first time, in the urban area, in the urban areas, it has already started, where there will be some administrative funds that would obviously normally pay for that. C A C is not a recipient of any HUD funds through this or anything else. So, we continue to act. We had attempted to bill those who are receiving the, um, the benefit of the HUD funds that are coming through, and that did not work out. We have gone to the Regional Network and said, folks, we wanna do this. We anticipate that by next year, we'll be able to act as the convening agency and actually be able to receive enough funding to have, everybody knows the Hamilton, happily write the grant for us. We've already talked her down significantly. C A C is going to kick some money into this pot, but Beth's request is for that. And we, C A C will contract with, excuse me, with the county so that you're receiving your port, reports. And one of the things we hope to do is to be able to have the soon-to-be-hired, we hope, coordinator of the Regional Network be able to integrate some work with Lee, so this really is less of a bird anomaly, and we can eventually not phase out that part of it, but certainly have a more integrated approach.
Yeah. I think that, very well done, Estelle. Um, I had mentioned, I had brought this up just to see, was this a possibility, a few, several weeks ago, in talking to Maggie, and I think it was you I spoke to directly, not Mark. And, um, you know, Beth and I keep this around a little bit, like, do we wanna, you know, offer, you know, this, this assistance? And, you know, as Estella said, it was sort of prorated per agency of the capacity, what they get and the amounts that they have. And is it, always turns out those who have, uh, who get the least, uh, you know, actually pay, and, and those who get the most, you know, it gets tough. So, um, it is a benefit to everyone. We, we, through the commission, have had grants come here as well, so there is, um, you know, a real, a real strong need. And what we did put as sort of a caveat to this is that the coordinator, learn this process. I mean, God forbid, if anything happens to Lee or she moves away, uh, this is a person with an expertise that would be hard to recreate quickly, uh, especially for the price we're, we're probably used to at this point. And number two, um, it's, it's just good business for us to understand exactly everything that's going on in this grant and how it's being played out. And that would be good for us. So that would be the reporting and the caveat, that, that, that this money goes forward with, with a little bit more to it than just someone writing the grant. That it's gonna be a, um, a learning experience and a shared, a shared experience.
I, I think that that's a good word. I have a staffer who does all of the reporting on it now. Karenian Franchini.
C A C does do the bulk of putting, getting, getting it all together, you know, putting it all in these big lumps for, for the, the grant writer to kind of get through.
And we, we'll continue in that role.
Yes.
And I'm hopeful, and I say that hesitantly, cautiously hopeful, that when the HUD H U D Act actually hits the rural areas and it comes here, with C A C, well, that will certainly be in a position to apply as the, as the convening agency for the continuum, because we're acting in that role. And we'll have the ability to collect enough admin to make that part of it. But we would always want it to be at an intersection with the Regional Network, because it's an important, it's a portion of it, and I think it needs to be there. And I think that one of the strongest arguments is this is money that is coming into this region at a time where everything, to this region is very hot.
Right. And also the shared responsibility between the two entities, the county and C A C, are independent, pretty much, of the process.
If you could just briefly speak about how this money is used?
Sure. I would be more than happy to. $391,962 goes to what's called our pro-rata share. So that amount of money is used to create affordable housing within this region. Uh, $44,000 of the $1,494, assuming that the numbers come out exactly equal as to what they did last year, will be what's called bonus money. That's for any grant that goes in with a score of 89 or better. You receive a little pocket of money, and that can be used for a new project. Starting next week, we've just prepared the R F, uh, C A C has just prepared the R F R for entities on the Cape and the islands to give us their, uh, response to the R F P for how they would use that money if indeed they were awarded, and that will come against. And then $1,588 and change is used for shelter plus care, support services, and vouchers. Shelter plus care is anyone that is in a permanent supportive housing situation and receives case management and/or other care around it. For instance, ones that would pop to your mind right away, Champ Homes, Barnstable Housing Authority has several of them, Pilot House has several of them. In addition, it supports South Cape Coast legal services. I'm doing this without my charter fund.
You're doing a very good job.
They have the chart, you have the chart of what was funded?
Okay. South Coast Legal Services provides a part-time attorney to hear...
Oh, thank you. I can do it really easily.
Yeah. Um, a part-time attorney for $25,000, and that person is in housing court for individual clients. Vin Fin has folks out on the street to take those that are mentally ill into permanent housing. Much of this goes to vouchers for individuals to live in permanent, individuals or families to live in permanent supportive housing. Yeah, I don't think I've heard that anybody. AIDS Group uses a significant portion of it to provide medical case management, along with case management, and affordable housing. And Duffy has some veterans' locations. The priority this year for HUD is homeless veterans. So the bonus money that I referred to, the $44,000, will be put out in an R F P that has that as a priority. Lee is very aware that that is how we will be writing this regions, only because we happen to know that it has priority. And it's, it is not worth writing a non-priority goal.
I think it's very important to address the issue of conflict of interests. I wonder if, you know, if Duffy sort of spoke in the event before.
Yes. So the action that we're requesting is just consensus from the three commissioners for staff to prepare a contract, and then, so that, which would then be before you sign, and also for C A C to sign. And we, we are teeing this up now because we wanted to have the conversation before we went down this path. So if there is consensus from the three of you to fund this $7,000 out of your existing county commissioner's budget, miscellaneous, which is in your operating county commissioner's budget, then Beth, when she's back, will prepare the scope and include some of the things that she actually referenced in her memorandum, and you'll have a contract to sign as soon as we get it signed by you guys.
Right. And I will, in the meantime, be signing with Lee, who will start. Karenian's already working on it, because it's due.
Yeah, it's due. Yeah, we're, we're almost behind. But it is really amazing, the other, uh, last week, we had a Regional Network meeting, and all of the Continuum of Cares were there, giving their report. So, this gives you a snapshot, but there's much more detail behind this, and, um...
It's not a good idea to me.
It's a program that's been a high priority for us.
Okay. So I have, I will, my, we're writing...
You're supposed to keep it shut now.
We're signing off.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for the consensus, and you'll see a contract prepared for everybody's signature.
Okay. Well done.
All right, very good. Thanks, Estelle.
Thanks for coming in, Estelle.
I have a, I have a note here from Bob Torres. He's stuck in traffic, and there's an accident at Exit 5. I think he was stuck a little early.
It's not an accident. It's roadwork.
Try to get his, his question as possible.
Troy or Torres?
Troy. I think she meant Troy.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, yeah, we could break this up.
I would suggest we have a recess until...
Rescess, yes. That sounds fine. Until Mr. Troy comes back.
Good morning.
This is Eric McKenna. He's a newest lawyer at Troy Law.
Good.
Pleasure.
How do you do? Nice to meet you.
Okay. Anytime you're ready.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're reconvening a meeting of the municipal county commissioners, and on the agenda is Ethics Commission item and discretionary referral issues, Bob Troy County Council.
How do you wanna proceed? What would you like?
This thing keeps me out of jail.
I know a lot about it from any one.
We're learning more and more as time goes on. You know, I always figure that people know a lot about computers because they, they sort of pour a lot of time into it.
Right.
And, uh, a lot of it is because it's a big black hole you can put time into. I hope the open meeting law, the understanding of it, doesn't, you know, doesn't get to that point.
Right. Let me, uh, how would you discuss this? Maggie, can you, yeah, Mark had said, what, uh, and what, you, should we review what happened, or what, what exactly?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think that that would be a good place to start, is to review where we are, you know, where we've been, where we are, and what, and what actions that we need to have going forward.
And, and this is with respect to the issue of the, under the Conflict of Interest Law?
That's the Ethics Commission.
That's the Ethics Commission item.
Right. That's the Ethics Commission item, and then there's discretionary...
Well, okay, let's, let's go, I, I, I think that it helps maybe to, to kind of look at where we are right now, and then we can go backwards. Where we are right now is, uh, we're at the point that it's very clear that the authority of the Ethics Commission with respect to interpretations as to conflict of interest is primarily focused on municipal employees as opposed to county employees. And when you think about that, they have acknowledged that, that their jurisdiction to give advice by statute is conferred to review situations involving municipal town or city officials as opposed to regional government. And so, part of that focus, I think, also suggests that the primary focus of the Conflict of Interest Law is on municipal officials. And so, for instance, the, the section of the statute that talks about acting as an agent, uh, or an attorney, and, 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 and suggests those types of conflicts, uh, is primarily focused on actions by municipal officials. So, for instance, when I, um, rendered my opinion to the chair on June 14th, we reviewed each of the various components of your service, Mr. Doherty. For instance, as a member of the Howard, Howard Housing Authority, the Cape Light Compact, the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Human Services Need for the Town of Barnstable, the Ethics Commission responded, our focus, meaning their focus, the Ethics Commission, is on Mr. Doherty's service as a municipal employee. We really don't have the same type of statutory responsibility to review his actions as a county official. That made me think that, applying that principle, that the conclusion that I came to, that the Conflict of Interest Law really doesn't center on county officials and their actions, it kind of butchers that, because to the extent that the Ethics Commission doesn't have authority, similar authority over county officials, it means that the legislature didn't intend that the same rules apply. So, to put it succinctly, what I'm saying is, it makes a lot of sense, if you're a town official, to be subject to the specific provisions in Chapter 268A. So, for instance, if I'm, I'm gonna just say, I'm an official of the Town of Barnstable, the prohibition in the statute that prohibits me from acting as an agent or an attorney from anyone other than the Town of Barnstable makes sense, because my devotion is, is, is supposed to be limited to the Town of Barnstable. When you think about it, and this is the, the point of my opinion, regionalization is, is, regional government is very different than town government. Regional government, your focus is not just on the county. Your focus is on the interaction between the county and the communities within the county. And so therefore, there are going to be situations where you can be involved, for instance, as you are in Howard, on the Housing Authority, and you may deal with issues here at the county that have to do with housing. But unless there is a specific conflict, for instance, if something, if, if you were sitting as a county commissioner, and it was matters involving housing, and Howard was kind of, uh, in play along with the other towns, and you had to make a decision, in that instance, you definitely would have to recuse yourself. And I think you understand that, and you acknowledge that. But, except for those specific types of conflicts, I think that we can, and it is our position, that regional government has a different set of rules. And that the strict, uh, because, is, as I pointed out in my opinion, all of the provisions of the Conflict of Interest Law say, except as otherwise provided by law. That begins, well, the law of the Commonwealth is the charter that created Barnstable County, the Cape Cod Regional Government. And therefore, I think that to the extent that the charter authorizes you to kind of wear two hats, to that extent, it is not a violation of the Conflict of Interest Law. But we're gonna have to play this out, you know, as it prospectively, as it, as it presents itself. So, as you know, we have addressed, um, the issues to date, and they have been the issues relating to the Cape Light Compact and the, um, C V E C that Mr. Bernstein has addressed with respect to the, the role that county officials play on those agencies. So, I mean, I, I think we're, we're still in process, but I, I think that the answer is that there is more latitude extended to county officials in terms of, of when they act pursuing the goals of regional government, because inherent in that is some type of wearing two hats, as it were. So, I, I think that's where we are as of right now, and, you know, I think the way that we're gonna have to continue doing it is that if you feel that there are conflicts that you, you know, raise those conflicts and identify them in writing, and then we'll respond, and then we'll send them on to the Ethics Commission and let them play out one by one.
Can I just go back to something you said, 'cause I wanna, so, the county commissioners appointee to the Cape Light Compact, potential conflict relative to, say, and let's think about what they vote on. They vote on energy efficiency projects. So if this Cape, the county buildings or properties were going to have energy efficiency improvements and exceed the $150,000 cap, because this is something that happens all the time, but does happen, for towns and the county, Bill, the course, best course of action would be, because he's voting for Barnstable County to receive a direct financial benefit, he should recuse himself from that vote?
It is a good question.
It's a que, because I'm just, I just wanna make sure I'm getting confused on what you said, Bob. Sorry.
What I'm saying is, if, if, as a county official, and you are also a town official, this is, this, and, and the matter in which you are a town official, for instance, in, I'm gonna use the, the, uh...
Howard.
Howard Housing Authority. If there is something with, in which, as sitting as a county official, there would be a specific conflict between the interest of the Town of Howard, and specifically the Housing Authority, and other responsibilities that you have as a regional commissioner, you should recuse yourself. You should not act.
Can I have to, I don't think you answered my question.
I think Maggie needs to get her question answered.
Yes. And I'm sorry to sound sort of dense on this, and I always say away from the Cape Light Compact. So if the Howard Housing Authority, because these guys are on multiple boards, so it doesn't, they're not, forget about Bill, any of, if the housing, Howard Housing Authority was getting a grant from the Barnstable County...
Right.
And one of my commissioners served on that board, as well as a commissioner.
Yes.
That commissioner should recuse hism or herself from any action.
Yes.
Regardless of what the subject matter is, is the message that you're delivering.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, but there was one thing I wanna make clear, that when you were talking about the allocation of money from the Cape Light Compact to a county project, it was very specific in your language to say, or, in the Cape Light Compact, I do not have a vote with regard to the transfer of funds unless it's to break a tie.
Right.
And in that case, I would have to recuse myself.
Right.
I agree.
I think that, you know, 268A usually addresses some sort of personal gain as far as a conflict of interest. And I think that it's safe to say that there's nobody here in this room or in this county that... that works in, somewhere we're getting a kickback or some kind of monetary gain.
I agree.
But we have vested interests, which are different. And those vested interests are something that we believe in, and that we have worked hard for, and we want to see happen. And by being a commissioner, and I think that this is where our charter might have to reflect these things, because it's come up, and I'm not saying that anybody's done any impropriety here, but it can lend itself to the opinion of others, that there's a conflict of a vested interest. So, I'm asking, do you believe that it is in our interest, as we serve on various boards, and I've been, I was on the Cape Coast Commission for a couple of years, Bill was on it for several years, Pat is on it now, they have a chair. Now, I would be very uncomfortable if any of those, any board that I'm on voted me as their chair, because a chair is a much more high-profile position, and you can dictate the way a meeting can go. So, therefore, if, even if you're doing everything above board, if those, if there are people that are in disagreement, you're putting not only your own self at question, you're also, if you have staff, your immediate staff, in various positions, where they can be accused of having that. Don't you think that those are, those are questions, and I'm not saying everybody's violated anything here, but I think that as we go forward as a Board of Commissioners, these are things that we should look at and address and actually have as a policy issue as to, when we are on these boards, what is exactly our role? Will we ever take these on? Not because we're doing anything illegal. Everybody has, everybody wants to see things happen, but I believe that once it goes through a process, you've given it your all. But do you, do you think it's, it's, it's a good advice for us to maybe take this on?
You're talking about perception. The perception.
The perception, and because Ethics Commission will always say, even if it's illegal, if the perception of the public is that it's illegal, then you got a perception and a conflict problem. I mean, I could pull out a number of other examples that have nothing to do with us, but other officials serving in various capacities here, and I'll refrain from doing that. However, you know, I'm more concerned about our perception, of how people perceive us and how they perceive us going forward. Because I do believe that we, you know, I'm all about the process, and if the, if you got to go by an open, transparent, public process when it comes to public issues and public money. But if, if anybody can find anything there, I think that we have to look at those areas where people can take a look and say, look, there's, you know, this is all because they're just driving the chain, they don't care what anybody says because they're going to do it anyway. I mean, they're not accusing us of taking money, they're accusing us of just thwarting the process.
Let me, you know, I think you've made some valid points, and I want to, you know, kind of enter into a dialogue with you on those. I think the first question is, the first problem is that the phrase "conflict of interest" is a misused phrase in common parlance, in government, and in reporting about government. It's not clear what we're talking about. On one hand, we have a law, Chapter 268A of the General Laws, which is called the Conflict of Interest Law. That's kind of unfortunate in a way, because I think a more sophisticated title might reflect what it actually intends to govern. And you are 100% correct that its primary function is to prevent personal gain from service as a public official. And you are also correct that in any of the controversy involving Barnstable County, no one has been accused, and there certainly is no evidence to reflect that anyone has done anything for personal gain. So, legally, in that sense, the county and all its officials are in the clear. And that should be made paramount, because sometimes headlines and other types of things, you know, don't make it clear when that term is used. And that's not just confined to Barnstable County, that's confined to all of local government. Now, having said that, there is another area which the Ethics Commission is correctly focused on. In addition to the personal gain, there is a section of the statute which prohibits a person who's governed by the statute from acting as an agent or an attorney on any matter in which that governmental unit has a direct and substantial interest. And that is more problematic. I am saying to you is that I think that the intent of the statute says that when you are a town official, because a town is a single, isolated municipal corporation, that what it pretty much says is, if you're a town official, you can't represent any other interest except the town. And, you know, there's various qualifications, but I think that's pretty clear, and we expect that. I mean, let me give you an example, that if I am a member of, let's say, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, I should be held to a standard that everything I do is in the best interest of the Town of Yarmouth, and that I'm not serving anyone else's interest. And I think that makes sense. And that's the law. The problem with that, it becomes compounded when you're not dealing with a town, but you're dealing with a regional government in which the charter itself anticipates, it says right in the charter, you're expected to serve on municipal boards and other intergovernmental boards, such as we have created either directly or indirectly. For instance, the Cape Light Compact. That rule doesn't really apply then, because you have, the purposes of a regional government may be that you, there's a confluence, that you're working with a particular community as a public official, but also that that community is working with the county in developing regional plans for the same thing. So, what I am suggesting is that, to the extent the conflict of interest law is relevant, that we understand that there may be a different prism to look at a situation of a public official who's strictly municipal and that, and a county. And put very bluntly, what I am suggesting is, it seems like there are different rules that govern county officials. Now, that's the conflict of interest law. The second point is kind of about, it's not really conflict of interest, but it's, I think it's more perception of conflicts when people wear different hats, that's what you're referring to. And the question that I guess you have to decide is, that's outside of the ambit of the law. But do you want to put in some kind of codification, some standards, which would be something in? I would suggest where you would put that would probably be in the Administrative Code. You would, you could put provisions of the Administrative Code, which could contain standards. One of the standards, we all know, the most important standard, and I don't think it's a problem, because the public is pretty sophisticated, and the press is, and the media has been good, is everyone kind of knows the different hats that everybody wears. But disclosure cures a lot of these type things. So, for instance, if you're an official in Sandwich, and you are, you know, on a regional board, such as the Assembly, could be, you know, that you could wear, you know, two hats, it's pretty clear, you know, because of disclosure, you know, where you're coming from. And I think this point has been made, has been made, for instance, that different members of the Assembly may also be town employees and officials. Disclosure tells us that, in other words. So, if we hear that, if we hear someone who is a member of the Assembly who also is a town official of some sort, we know that that person is probably looking not only to doing what's right for the county, but also doing what's right for the town. And I think the town, that's part of what's expected. But when it's disclosed, and you know that upfront, I think that that kind of cures that problem. People know where it is. Whether you decide you want to have rules that go beyond that, rules of kind of standards of conduct, that you could put in the Administrative Code, you certainly, you could do that.
Okay, there's, there's an issue that comes up right away, which says that, and I believe that was in one of the opinions from the Attorney General, that said that as long as the county commissioners did not supervise the activities with regard to your participation in these other county boards.
Right.
Then that the matter of your, let's see, conflict was, you know, was not present.
Right.
Now, if I were, for example, a co-chair of a group, let's say, like the Human Service to End Homelessness, would that, you know, or I were the, offered, and I did, was invited to become the vice chair of the NPO, for example, and I could, for example, become the chair of the Regional Transportation Authority, that suggestion of having a code of conduct in the Administrative Code suggests that there is an element of supervision that the county commissioners are applying, which would mean that indeed they are creating a situation, in my opinion, of potential conflict of interest by participation.
Well, that could be, you know, you're right, that it could be a decision to go forward and to put standards in the Administrative Code could lead to complications such as that. That's, that goes to the issue whether you think it's appropriate, you want to do that.
One of the comments, Sheila, to get to your point about chairmanships.
Mm-hmm.
You'd, some of your boards and committees require commissioners to be the chair. So, you have to be, you have to, if standards were developed, just file that in the back of our mind.
Such as?
The only one that I'm aware of is the, is the WIB.
Yes.
Or REB, but I can't even remember.
Right. The WIB requires you to be.
You are the chief elected official, not the, not the, not the chair.
Right. Not the chairman.
Matter of fact, you're not even, that does not make you eligible to be on the Executive Committee either.
Okay, just keep, just remember that as we move forward.
But that's a statute issue.
But that's a statute issue, and with that statute issue comes different responsibilities that, you know, they expect you to.
Right.
At least know about, if not, you know, have the, have those, because they're looking for people in regional, regional places to oversee, oversee some of that money as opposed to just people that are being hired and...
Yeah, anytime the law requires something, obviously, there's no conflict there. And what, I guess it's more of a communications thing, you have to communicate that, you have to make it clear to the public that, you know, this is what the law requires, this is why, and I think that when you do that, then, you know, that helps in terms of the disclosure element.
If, if I may?
Go ahead.
I think part of our problem is that we're in Cape Cod, so we're this peninsula out here, and a lot of people, you know, share a lot of different things, and I think it's the way things have happened from the Boards of Selectmen, you know, that John owns the gas station, and he's also on the board, or whatever, you know, there's always been these perceived vested interests. And I do think that even though that the code says, at least it discloses, you know, for full disclosure, I'm speaking about this, and I'm speaking about it in the Times of Falmouth, but everybody knows that I'm on the Selectmen in Falmouth. I mean, and I think Pat does a very good job in keeping those two hats separate.
There's a little difference between appointed and elected.
Yeah.
I mean, the elected part is governed by the statutes.
Right.
So, not that it's always a great idea.
Yeah, but, you know, we have people, I know, there's selectmen on the Assembly, and there's a town, elected a town official, not elected, a hired town official, appointed town official, who happens to also be on the Assembly. And, you know, and I'm not saying that, but it's only been on different rare occasions, whereas in many ways, I mean, the Town of Barnstable, because it's regional and there's an interest to them in many ways, because they're just big, you know, that Assembly person could be stating that every meeting on almost most votes, because something's going to affect Barnstable one way or another. And the other point that was, that was made in the Ethics Commission, and the way I understood it, under different training that I've been under, is when you are elected, and this is what I'm always trying to say to the, to the Assembly, when you're elected as an Assembly person or as a county commissioner, your first allegiance is to that county government, because you have been elected to that county government. You're not there necessarily to represent your town, you're there as your representative of the town, but your allegiance is to the government that has elected you. And so, how do you, how do you put those two together if you're a town?
Well, when, when you're elected by a town to, to serve on the Assembly, or you're elected by the entire county to serve as a county commissioner, your job is you're functioning as a representative in a regional government, which by its very nature, this is the point I keep on making, is a hybrid. It is a combination of municipal and county functions. The regional government works when the municipalities and the regional government, which is composed the municipalities, work together and pool resources, and, and work together to solve different problems on a regional basis. So, it, it, it's very difficult to say you're serving one or the other, because it's a hybrid. This is my whole point. My, my point is that when it comes to regional government, you have to employ a different analysis when you do, when you're just part of a town or a city. And that is going to be one which is going to recognize that you're going to, you're going to have certain obligations and fiduciary responsibilities to the regional government, which is the county, but you also are a representative who is elected by a town. So, I think it's a hybrid, that's what I...
There is a concern that I have, that when you stand for elected office, you have an agenda that you put out to the people as to what you hope to accomplish. And to me, part of that, you know, part of the responsibility of living up to the promises that you make when you present yourself to the people is you follow through on those things. If you, if you have an agenda, for example, that says that I'm going to promote as much as possible the safety net issues on, in Barnstable County, then I have a responsibility to live up to my promise to do that. If I, as part of the, let's say, part of what I stood on for election, to promote the interest of water quality, to promote a wastewater management plan, to promote energy efficiency, to promote better transportation and housing, all of those things suggest that if that's what I said, that I was promising to the people that, you know, to vote for me, then I have a responsibility to take all legitimate means to follow that up, which, in my opinion, includes memberships on these different committees to be part of what I would call the sphere of influence, to make sure that that point of view that I presented to the people was indeed heard and followed through by that committee, rather than having anecdotal visits where, you know, where I presented, you know, a particular point of view. So, working with committees on a regional basis is part of the responsibility that grows out of what I'd call the promise that's made during the elected process, during the election process.
If I may speak to that. I agree with you. We all, we all run on some sort of platform, that this is what we believe in, and this is what we're going to push forward. But that doesn't mean that we're going to manipulate a process that leaves some people out. That's why we have, you know, we are, not a lot of people feel like, there's a certain number of people that are driving a process right now in this country. Now, if they get elected and they say, we got elected to basically dismantle, to dismantle government, that's not what we think they should do. So, you can't just take the rules and make them for yourself, because that's, no, and I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm not accusing anybody here of this. I'm saying as a debate.
It's just, it's just so counterintuitive to say that I stand for this, and I want to make sure that it happens, and then have fear that, well, by participating in those actions, it would make it happen after the people have elected you to do it, that somehow you're going to be accused of manipulating the process by doing it.
But what I'm saying is, as a chair, as a chair of two entities, you could have the perception of being able to maneuver or frustrate the public process to, to your own means.
If I did that, I would be doing something illegal. If I'm doing something illegal, I would be taken to task for it.
That's it. Sheila's raised a question, I'd like, if you may, counsel asset. Is there an issue, regardless of the policies of what the Board may decide to do, but is there an issue under the statute of a commissioner chairing a committee that he or she is appointed to? And, you know, they could decide that they don't want to do that for a lot of good reasons, but I think Sheila's asking a question that, if I understand what you're saying, is there an appearance of a, is there a conflict there? Is that a reason of appearance?
There's not an issue that implicates a violation of the Conflict of Interest Law. So, but, so, the problem when you're dealing with perceptions, if, I think we said this before, Sheila, is that if you're going to take the position that somebody in forming a perception can, in effect, because the person perceives something, they then become, then you then create a... then you then create a violation of the law, that makes the law entirely subjective. That makes me, as a person who is perceiving something, in charge of deciding when other people violate the law. That doesn't make any sense. It goes to something that I like to say, feelings aren't facts, because you feel something does not make it a fact. So, what I, what I think the answer to it is, is, is that the law has a more objective, and there may be a perception. So first, let me give an example of something. Let's say that there is a community, let's say that there is a community in which it's, a person that is on the assembly has appointed somebody who, let's say, has appointed the town planner as their, or has elected the town planner as their representative of the assembly. I can perceive that that person, when it go, in terms of dealing with the various planning issues that might become before the assembly, or things about planning that involve development, et cetera, that that person has a conflict, because he or she is a planner, and therefore, for whatever community that person represents, he or she's bringing that to the assembly. And that's true. That, I, I could have that perception. It may be that there is something, that there's a bias there that's legitimate to observe, but you can't take that and then conclude that the person somehow has a conflict, or is doing something untoward or incorrect.
Could I make a comment on that? Because I think, let's say, you could be the chairman of a planning board in a, in a town, and the town could also elect you to be a member of the Cape Cod Commission, something that normally none of us would do. There's, there's no real conflict there, but it's how the person conducts themselves in the exercise of their responsibilities as a member of the commission. If they use their position on the commission to try to affect certain benefits, because they happen to be the chair of the planning board, and try to bring issues to the, to the commission that normally would not be brought to the commission, but they're using their position on the commission to try to help benefit specific issues in their community, that then I, so the conflict isn't being there, it's how one conducts themselves in the position.
I agree.
So I think that's really the issue.
Right, what I'm trying to say is that the Ethics Commission, and they'll say this themselves, really addresses, the 268A law addresses personal gain, something money, something tangible. These aren't tangible things. Sometimes they're ego. You want this to happen so bad, or you are, I really believe in this. Now, if I tried to use my co-chairmanship to drive some sort of agenda that we're going in certain direction, and some agencies are going to gain more than other agencies, because that's the way I see them, and I'm going to do everything in my power to run this committee so that that happens, then I, I would feel that I am in total violation, because others will perceive that I am, I'm doing, I'm, I'm, I am, I am setting up a process within its legal parameters, but I'm frustrating it somehow.
So, Supicidelio, when he promotes casinos, is operating counter to, let's say, the interest of the community, because he's promoting a particular agenda?
Well, he, it all comes down to, I mean, this is all, this is all about where the public is, but what I'm saying is what we have to do, that's right. It's about integrity.
It's how you conduct yourself.
How you conduct yourself and its perception, and it has to be disclosed, and one has to recognize it. I think that it has to, and sometimes we don't recognize it. So I just think that when you are, say, the chairman of a particular board, and then the chairman of a board that has, that you have, you have some sort of oversight as, as the other chairman, as the, if one hat can oversee the other hat, and that hat is now the primary hat in the other organization, I think that we ourselves have to take a look at those scenarios and maybe address them in the general administrative code, so that we are not, as I say, I'm not saying anybody's done anything here, what I'm saying is, we're making, we can make ourselves an issue, as opposed to the issue that's on the table.
Well, I, I will say this, that when you people designate one of your members to serve on various boards, you, you know, have the, the right to consider the implications of whatever that person serves as. So, for instance, if you think that it might create an impression, let's say you're going to appoint person X to, to a particular position as the county representative, if that's the case, then you, as part of that responsibility, have the right to, to, to take into account perceptions, and that's what your job is, to do that. I mean, you, you want to do that to such an extent, so you want, you want to make the right choice, that the person be the right fit. That's, that's all within your discretion. And if you think, if one person on the commission feels that appointing another member is not sending the appropriate signal, then it's your obligation to raise that at the meeting and to have an open discussion about it. And then finally, the, the, the county, as all government organizations do, makes a decision according to how everybody thinks is, is the best thing.
See, I think you could create more problems and more harm by having regulations like that. I, I mean, I just think that, let's say that a member of this Board of Commissioners represented the town of Yarmouth, and Yarmouth had a wastewater issue, they wanted to raise money, and they were having trouble. Well, suppose that individual who's a member of that committee or board in Yarmouth comes to, comes to this commission as a commissioner and says, you know what, I think the county should pay for this, that's going to solve the whole problem in Yarmouth. So you try to advocate for the county to pay for that. That really is clearly inappropriate. But which of us is ever going to do that?
Well, you could just say that I just did it. I mean, in some ways, in some ways, I'm the co-chair of the regional network, there is money there, but I looked at that as the money that benefited an entire region. That, that was a different, but I'm just saying, all right, so, but I'm, I'm just saying, so those are those lines where one has to understand that if, even though you sometime, we have to understand where the process lies, and where our, where, where we're positioned in there.
But it's a regional benefit. This isn't a specific benefit to.
I agree.
A committee. It's a regional.
I agree.
You're, you're supposed to do that.
Yes, I know, I'm advocating for that. However, but if you are on a committee that is now focused on a regional, an issue within the region, that you believe in strongly, and it happens to be in a particular focus of a town, that's where one has to take a look at, my authority in this position and my authority in that position can clash. And even though that's not my intent, and I have no personal gain, other than the fact that I would feel good if I got what I think is the best thing to happen, that's also still a vested interest, not the public's interest. The public's interest is the process.
Well, don't forget, don't forget that the public can defend its own public interest. And if the perception that you say is being created is, is perceived by enough people in the public, the problem's going to be solved, because you're going to be defeated when you run.
Your vested interest is private, and, you know.
Well, I mean, well, sometimes people's vested interest is private.
You have one other item.
I think that we need to wrap this up, because we have another.
So we can continue to talk about these things, write these up to you.
But the bottom line here is that, as far as the things that have been referred up to this point, there are no conflicts of interest, and there are no issues with regard to requiring further action on this board under law.
No, I, I think that the issues that have been brought to date, we have responded, and I think that the response is correct, and that any subsequent issues will have to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. That's what's decided.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
There are other things, for instance, and the thing, and as I said, and I don't want to go there, but we did, it was brought up at the assembly the last time, and so I do want to, there are individual issues, for instance, about how the county performs different services for other agencies, and that are basically policy issues that you have to, to look at. They may not involve an actual conflict of interest under the statute, but on this, I think Sheila's correct, that there are certain perceptions that are, are made by people, and you, you might want to look at those things prospectively to see whether they're in the best interest of the county. I think it's a continuing thing, because we've done something one way once, and even if it's legal, doesn't mean we should just continue doing things that way.
Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's right.
Just because it's legal doesn't mean that it's correct public policy. Well, I don't know about ethical, but.
Appropriate.
Appropriate public policy. I agree with that, and that's why.
Okay, then I would suggest to you at this point, I'd like to wrap this up, that we have an opportunity during the budget process to look at all of these policy issues, to decide how those policy issues affect our going forward, because it is in the budget process where we make those decisions with regard to policy, because that's where we apply the funds that we receive in order to operate it. So with that, I would say.
No, I have two items. You have a discretionary referral, you have the item that I'd like Bob to address, and then I got an email on this debacle with the meeting this afternoon that I need counsel's direction on. So, can you?
Before that too, I just want to make sure that you have received my opinion of September 2nd, 2011, around about proposed ordinance 11-08, you, the commissions received that.
According to that, we, the charter specifically allows the adoption without, if we do not act within a specific period of time, it allows action. I think that what that requires going forward is advice to the assembly to send things to us at a time when we could have a 10, 10-day.
I agree. And incidentally, that's something that can be specifically dealt with in the administrative code, a procedure which accommodates your schedule, so that you're not, I mean, it could be at some point that there could be an adversarial relationship between the assembly and the commissioners, which would disrupt your, this is just theoretical, but you want to, in the administrative code, you can actually provide for a specific procedure as to how the receipt, the word receipt is not defined as was done in this, in this opinion. This actually, Eric worked in this opinion, this was his first opinion.
This is relative to proposed ordinance 11-08.
Right, yeah, that's a good job.
Okay, so that, that addresses that issue. We have some responsibility for that. Now, on this discretionary referral issue that we got from a citizen in the town of Brewster.
Right.
A citizen of Brewster asked for it?
I, I think that actually, on this matter, we had a recent meeting, I think it was an internal meeting, but that the Cape Cod Commission, Mr. Nizwiki, made a very, very telling point on this, that right now, there is currently no application pending anywhere. And so the idea that there would be some basis for some referral, that doesn't, it doesn't seem to be the appropriate mechanism. There's, there's actually nothing pending.
What this was, what this was referring to was a particular project that was underway and under scrutiny.
Right.
And it was maybe going beyond the jurisdiction of this region for an opinion. And instead of that, they felt that they would be more comfortable with a more local, regionalized opinion. So that the request was for the commissioners to make that discretionary referral. Was the question posed, do we have the right to make that discretionary referral? I'm not sure what the question was, because these answers come back from Bill, Bob, sometimes without me knowing what the question was, that he was presented with.
There was a specific request that we make a discretionary referral of the Brewster-Win project. In order for us to do that, there would have had to have been a local permit pending. The, the, the thing that CIVAC was originally looking at was requesting an exemption from the permit process for the, as I understand it, you know, for the state to go ahead. Since they have put that into abeyance and have not, are not acting immediately, there is nothing for us to refer. So therefore, we cannot make a discretionary referral.
And that's, that's exactly.
So this is, this is a mechanism. So say a town goes ahead and says, we're going to go ahead and do this, and they issue the permit, and there were some people who feel like, you know what, we really didn't have, that was, that was a town meeting stuffed with, you know, 200 people on their side, and we didn't know about it, and et cetera, et cetera. We want you to refer this to the commission. That's, it's under those things. But if there's, if it's just sort of mute, and it's still not sure where it's going to go, then there's no, nothing to refer yet.
If there's nothing actually pending.
What if it went, what if it went to the state? What if that went to the DPU?
Well, that wouldn't be a permit. What they're doing, the state, if it did go to the state, that's an application.
For exemption.
For exemption.
Right. And the other thing, and do we, do we support such a thing when we support regional, local control?
I think at that point, we would have the opportunity to comment.
That's a policy issue.
You have to look at what's being, as this is a local issue, and if, if, if it would fall under, say, a development of regional impact, and there were a permit pending locally, then you, I'm trying to think about the time that when Highfield, when we referred Highfield Hall and Falmouth to the, the commission for a DRI, there was a demolition permit pending in the town.
Right.
And that's what allowed us to go to the commission and say, if you can declare there's a development of regional impact, then they cannot demolish the building.
Right, I see.
Something like that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be even, it wouldn't be for us to do. I mean, we probably.
No, it was a request for us to do it. No, it came from a person in the town.
Asking the county commissioners.
Because there wasn't a permit. So I, I understand the.
And I think, I think we all agree.
Okay, that's, I get it.
Could you then communicate with this individual and tell him that we have, you know, that we basically have, we are not acting on this, because we do owe him an answer?
I'll, I'll refer to you the.
An email, is there?
The email, there was an email with that request.
All right, I'll, what if I, you make sure it's sent correctly. The last, the last issue, Bob, these people can drive you crazy. An email just came in from Pat Eldridge of, from Henri, she used to be Henri's chief of staff, and with a request for us to post a meeting agenda for a Barnstable County Review Committee. And they, and I now have an agenda for a meeting tonight at 7:00 PM. So, and they, this whole, this came about because the Patriot called and said, we don't have an agenda. So I have a question. We haven't constitute, the commissioners have not voted this as a committee. Obviously, Henri wants the meeting posted regardless of the fact that it's not a 48-hour notice. And they have not, they don't have, they have not appointed the committee. I do, someone took the list, but I did have a list of potential candidates. And I, I don't, you know, I'm not sure what action we should take.
Can I, all right, so we appointed Rob and Henri as chairs.
Right.
And of the committee.
Commission.
And we said, you can put together, you know, and we did not want to have anything to do with the list, because we didn't want to look like we were driving any train, because the assembly was wondering, like, why is this all happening? And it's basically from the public and the League of Women Voters more than it was from anybody else. So, in response to that, we set up this committee, we figure these two gentlemen are familiar with this as much as anyone else, we will leave the discretion up to you, just give us the list of who you believe should be on this committee, and we will kind of bless it. But we just got the list, but there's never been a formal blessing or an appoint, you know, an appointing, but we're not going to challenge.
We're not going to recruit the members.
We're not recruiting the members.
We're only going to appoint the committee.
I think the better way to do it would have been to allow the two co-chairs to select the members, empower them to appoint the members.
Well, in a way, we did, but everyone kept saying we had to approve it.
I was here the day, I was here at the last meeting, and that was the impression that I got. I got the impression that they were soliciting recommendations, and you had given them the authority, which would mean, if that's the case, is they can then constitute the committee. And since they are a separate governmental entity, they post their own meetings. But they have to post it in accordance with the open meeting law. You can't have a meeting tonight if you're just posting it.
Well, they are.
Well, then, then they're going to have to deal.
Then it's not an official meeting.
Yeah, they'll, I guess, maybe.
Probably an organizational meeting.
They could have, you know, some preliminary meeting, but they can't transact any business.
They can't do votes in.
No, they can't transact, they can't deliberate, no. They have to follow the open meeting law, and it's very important, because frankly, the irony would be that if this organization, which is kind of taking a look at, you know, revisiting issues, starts off on the wrong track, and not complying with the law in the very beginning, it's not going to create a lot of.
To look like we're driving a train, that we're not driving a train.
That's because the legislature's not subject to the open meeting law, so they don't think about this.
Yeah, they don't think about this.
And you could look back, I want to make sure.
So what's the agenda?
I want to make sure I got the note. What you, if I understood what was just said, is Henri and Rob, who were voted and appointed by the commissioners, have been, can constitute the members of their committee. So the Board of Commissioners are not appointing that committee. That's Henri.
Yeah, I think they should forward the list of whom they have appointed.
Which they.
They did.
They sort of kind of did.
From that point on, they're a separate governmental body, and they can post, no, I'm not saying you can't cooperate, they don't have to come and run to the government.
Right, but they, the reality is that we just got a meeting agenda, and the agenda Pat asked, is introductions, the commission charge. They wanted opening comments from the commissioners and the Assembly of Delegates, and materials slash prior reviews, schedule.
So they're not going to vote on a, yeah.
And they've got a next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I think.
So I think. So I think we're okay.
If they're doing ceremonial and organizational stuff prior to, you know, just prior to beginning the process of deliberation, I think that's okay. But if they, getting to anything substantive, they have to stay away from.
So for the three Commissioners who are potentially going to be there, you should not give an overview of county, you know, start talking about stuffs that are, that this committee is considering. Just say, hello, welcome.
And frankly, well, let's be blunt about it, too. They need to be told that they have to comply with the 48-hour requirement. There's no reason why they can't.
No, well, they're just not used to it. And actually, this email did come from Mark Zalinski on Monday, that the meeting was going to be on Wednesday. So in essence, they did notify somebody that it was going to be, it was 48 hours ahead of time. But it wasn't stated, you know, I mean, they're not used to the whole thing. So it wasn't posted. Mark didn't put that to care.
I went through this with the Attorney General last week. And even if you file the notice to the proper authority that appoints, that posts the meeting, and if they didn't post the meeting, even though it wasn't willful on your part or their part, it just simply wasn't posted, you cannot, you couldn't conduct the business. And if there's a complaint, then the Attorney General will have to.
The Patriot's going to.
Believe me, this happened to me last week. The Attorney General will then investigate. And if you had your meeting and it wasn't properly posted, they would determine whether or not you should be fined for having that meeting.
I mean, if I were the chair, I wouldn't hold the meeting. I wouldn't want to begin the work of the committee under any cloud. I would simply contact the people and say, look, we're going to do this next.
It's okay, as long as someone doesn't file a complaint. But if they file a complaint, they will investigate, and then they will determine whether or not, one, it was willful, two, you can, you have just, you have both of discussions. And three, when I forget what the third one was, and then they will, it just happened in another town about two weeks ago where that happened.
It'll be a very short meeting tonight.
Well, it'll be a short meeting, and I think, you know.
I did my best to be able to.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, they felt, you know, maybe they just assumed that by notifying Mark it was going to be posted, they.
But you need an agenda. They didn't even give.
That's all speculation. I think we can go on for this for a long time.
Can I just ask another question? They didn't have an agenda. So say they said, they sent this to Mark on Monday and said, could you post, this is when we're going to have our meeting. We'll send you other stuff afterwards. And then they sent the agenda now. That, if I remember right, you could put things on the agenda up until, up to the time of the meeting.
You could add things to the agenda. But let's be fair.
So that would, it would have been legal.
Yeah, let's be fair about this, because it's not all the committees. I see, I think that when you are, even though you're not officially appointing the committee, but when you're in effect authorizing a committee, I think part of that is an obligation on the part of the county. I'm not saying any specific person or persons. To make sure that the committee understands, these are what the requirements are. We'll help you, but you have to observe the requirements. And one of them is, you know, we're going to expect an agenda. I mean, this is, this is just good government economy.
Exactly right.
We're going to, we need to post an agenda 48 hours ahead, and you need to send it to us, and then we'll help you out. We need to give some, you know, structure.
But my sense is that now that Pat Eldridge is involved, and I don't think she's been involved in the last couple of days, I think this will all sort itself out. But up till now, I don't think they had the benefit of her administrative expertise.
Right, and that may be true.
They need to know that they're going to have to follow all the regulations, so they know what to do.
And I would take that as my obligation.
Because they're going to look very bullish if they don't. I mean, this is supposedly some, a group that's going to reform county government. It's not off to a good start. They're doing it in a way that's not in compliance.
And if they don't have it on the agenda, just like us, they're not going to be able to take it up.
I wouldn't have the meeting personally. I would call it, postpone it, just to get it. But that's.
Not a sidebar conversation, excuse me. But it's all about the same thing.
So whatever, that's what I would.
Do we have anything else?
No. You have another summary of actions.
No, I'm talking about.
We have to move our summary of actions. Nothing else.
So all set?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll see you again.
Where did you go to school?
Suffolk.
We went to Suffolk. And you just graduated this last year?
Oh, '10, so last year.
So you had to get your, yeah.
Actually, I was just, Eric told me, and I, you might know about, I had not known about it, but he went to a school called Boston Latin Academy.
Oh, really? I know a little bit about that. I didn't know, though.
And they, no, I just told him, there was an article the other day, they want to move it to high par. And there's a big, yeah, there's a big.
Big to do.
Where is it located at?
It's in Roxbury.
Yeah, it is. It's always been, it was, you know, was Roxbury, Spines?
Lewis Pitts, Shore Avenue.
It's a very good school, and.
I went to BC High.
Is there a connection to the old Boston Latin?
So we would know where that was.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was, I don't know, was it connected to Boston Latin?
It used to be Boston Latin by itself.
No, as I was explaining to Bob, there was Boston Latin and Boston Latin Academy until the '70s, so Latin was all women.
Right, that's exactly right.
That's right. It used to be over in Pardon Square in Dorchester.
I just put my daughter in a fort.
And then it became.
I know, that's a great school, one of my favorite schools.
So I didn't hear a motion. She.
I'm moved that we approved this.
Like school kids.
You know what I like about, I like the thing, it says, Fordham is our college, New York City is our campus.
She takes it to heart.
We have a motion on the floor. Do you second the floor?
Still accepted it?
Of accepting the summary of actions? Yes, I will accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do you have any reports to make?
Mark has given a written report, which I put in your.
Thank you. Very good to meet you. Good luck.
Very much. And that is it. The only comment that I would like to add to what Mark said is, I'll forward that email. Darlene said that they were in Western Mass as their AmeriCorps, and have received great feedback from the community and thanks. So you have your swearing in. So they've already been on their first assignment as a body of our next AmeriCorps group. So don't forget you have the swearing in. I think it is next Wednesday at 10:00 or 10:00 in the morning.
Yes, I also just.
What time in the morning? Because I have to go to Boston next week.
So it's either 9:30 or 10:00 in the morning.
Which I can do. Yeah, I don't have to go, at least till 11:00.
I also just want to just make a comment. Are you finished?
Yeah.
That tomorrow and, tomorrow and Friday is the Children's Cove Conference on lunch.
Oh, tomorrow is?
It's tomorrow and Friday. So they're going to have speakers, then they have lunch, and then they have speakers again for two days. It's, I mean, it's a full-blown conference that usually has about over 200 people. I know you're going to be going at some point, are you? No? No, you're not that one. You're going to the suicide thing. So.
Is this Friday?
No, it doesn't matter. I think if you want to.
Is this Friday or tomorrow?
The conference is for two days.
There is a Friday.
There is a Friday at the Cape Codder. If anybody's still, it may be full registration, but if anybody is out there in a practitioner and wants to register and get in on this, you can go to Children's Cove website, which is childrenscove.org. And I just wanted to tell you, you could go for the opening, or even in the middle and stop, and they will say, you know.